We already open?
Yeah.
We already open?
Pretty sure we did.
Right, this is the second continuation. That's embarrassing.
At least you realize your mistake.
All right, we're not gonna do that again. All right, continued hearing and we have a brief presentation by just announce your name and your position with the applicant.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, my name is Chip Nutter. I'm an architect representing the Institution for Savings. Let's take you through the proposed addition at their property at 312 Havre Street. This is the existing site plan. This being Havre Street and entrance, parking, parking, drive-through, three drive-through lanes, and then exit back onto Havre Street. We will not be doing, making any changes to the site plan at this time. What we're gonna be proposing is an addition on top of the canopy of the existing drive-through. And it's building three new offices on top of the existing canopy. We have to remove an existing office in this area and there are two people in that, so they'll be moving into this space. And the other person in this space has already doubled up someplace inside the building. They're gonna be adding some storage space. The addition is designed, it's a roof plan. It's designed to fit in, to look like it's part of the original building. This is the drive-through canopy, this is covered. There's tiers right now. Currently, there's a balustrade railing similar to this on top of this. We're gonna be replacing that with this, this face addition, the gable roof at the end. On Havre Street, here's the drive-through. Here are the drive-through lanes, there's an ATM in this lane. And that's the facing addition with another gable. And we're gonna be adding some balustrade similar to what's on the existing building. Remove that. And in the rear of the building, it's very similar, it just doesn't have a gable addition. So the square footage of the project is, there's 650 square feet. There's no plan to add any employees to the project at this point. And no changes to the site plan at this point. Do you have any questions?
It's similar to what was presented to previous time.
I have any...
Identical?
I think I need this for the hand there.
That's what I get.
I didn't catch that.
The board members have any questions? This, we have in front of us a certificate of vote for the modification special permit approval conditions. And this is a modification of the plan that was stated back in 2007 or revised in 2008. The conditions include no staffing beyond current staffing levels, any substantial revisions to site plan that would have to come back in, which that has already been stated that's not the case. And then also, Charlie thinks that I had the fire department chief had concerns with, because it is an addition over an empty space, that a fire protection plan be submitted detailing how the fire resistance of the ceiling, the overhang of the drive-through tellers, and the flooring that proposed in the office space will be accomplished, and a detailed plan on how the fire alarm system be updated for fire detection, which is done anyways by course when you add an addition, because this building, I believe, is not sprinkler at this time.
That's correct.
Jeff, you said this is not sprinkler, correct?
It's not, it's a non-sprinkler building.
So that only makes sense. So those conditions is the only condition that were added per the fire department's comments. The conservation commission comments came today. I don't even think I need to read them completely, because I think the board knows the location of this is in the riverfront protection area, it's in the flood plain, it's in the buffer zone, all three.
Yeah, they have a cost.
And it's stated, you know, this is for the record.
I mean, the conclusion is...
Yeah, I'm gonna go on this, get to the conclusions. I think it's important for the board before we take the vote to know if the conservation commission, because of the number of resource areas that this site is in, at best can be determined at this time. Proposed project, and this came in today, 3:00, doesn't appear to alter dredge fill or remove a regulated wetland resource area due to its occurrence on the existing first level of the existing structure. Therefore, an application filing with the conservation commission doesn't pin it necessary. Proposed project doesn't appear to have any impact on stormwater generation from this site. And I already mentioned the resource areas that the site is in. Any other questions? So those are the two. I think, I think the board is very aware that if parking was revisited at a different time, that would have to come back for the work.
Similar to this, do we need to, does this board need to take a vote on whether modification under our flood plain bylaw would be appropriate, which I don't think it would be for these very reasons, but would it make sense to just formalize that determination with a vote?
And that's what we request, that we have a letter requesting that.
All right, thank you, make a motion for that.
Okay, I'll move that, due to the minimal impact that this project would have on the flood plain, probably Charlie's showing a zero sign, that it's not necessary for the applicant to request a modification from his board of the flood plain special permit.
I'll second.
Cliff Pierce made the motion, flood plain special permit. Jean Patrillo seconded, all is in favor?
Aye.
Ten and one's voted. And did you have a chance to read the slight modification?
I did. Is there, is there site plan review as well?
It's on vote.
Okay, so do you have the site plan review? Do you have the site plan review decision as well?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna be voting on both.
Okay, because this is the special permit.
But I'm saying those two conditions are the same.
Right, right.
On each, they're added because the other ones were the same as well, so I only have to vote.
Yeah, that's fine. So you have a vote.
Yeah, we're gonna vote on them.
Perfect. No, this, we, those are FICO issues we have to do, so...
But we had to include, you know...
I have no issue with it.
Because we asked for comments, and we need to incorporate appropriate comments.
Yeah, if there was a condition that said we had to follow all...
Oh, it's a building...
Building code, then it'd be the same. So that's why I don't have an issue with it. We have to do those things anyway.
I know, I kind of would make the difference. Any other questions? Larry?
Nope.
So Larry Graham, our review engineer, has no more questions than this from working on with the applicant to come up to the point where we can vote to issue a certificate of vote. And that would be for modification, I guess, in a matter which, or site plan or special permit.
We could do them at the same time.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the site plan, modification of site plan with conditions for Assessor's Map 14 lot 12, 312 Havre Street, Raleigh, Mass. And at the same time, approve the modification of special permit at the same site. So I'll move. Cliff Pierce, second?
Second.
Second by David Jaqueline. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, regarding the first vote, is there any...
I mean, a memo?
Yeah, a memo or even, Ken might be fine with a phone call, I don't know.
Well, I will have, I'll have a phone call first.
Yeah.
But then I'll follow up with a memo.
Okay, perfect.
Through the administration office, okay?
Good, perfect, thank you.
Because they've been doing the minutes for us.
Yeah.
It's a matter of public record now.
Appreciate it. Yeah, that'll just give Ken a piece of paper. Did you apply for it yet?
No, it's just, it's just one of each.
You can go ahead and...
Is there something we can do tomorrow morning, then?
This has to go to Susan Haley tomorrow morning.
Right. The decision does.
Yeah, and then the appeal period begins, and then typically you could go to the building inspector and at your own risk, depending on his determination.
Yeah, he just wanted an...
He wants these.
Yeah, okay.
And he also wants that phone call from me talking about the flood plain.
You can file the permit, and then you can say, "I'll stop reviewing it."
I think, I think you can.
Yeah.
I'll get a copy of that tomorrow at the town hall, David. Keep me a folder for me.
Excuse me?
Typically, I do two at once, but one is enough, because that's what I have, and so...
I have more, but it doesn't have that.
That's fine.
So, please, this is for us, and you're gonna file one with, we filed this.
You're gonna file that. And take out any copies if you want.
Okay.
Let me see, wait a minute.
Just go to the town clerk's office tomorrow.
If you're gonna be wanting each other to sign one more.
Sure, absolutely.
I'll sign one more of these.
Yeah.
Site plan approval or missing?
Oh, you can do it one way or the other. Charlie, I'll, that way, I have two originals.
Yeah, that's good.
That's what I typically do.
I'm gonna fill in, it says six to zero. It's left.
Cross out the first end, there's too many ends in there.
There's too many ends?
Yeah, cross out one.
Oh, okay.
That's your question.
So it's six to zero, right?
Well, that's yours.
Special permit?
Yes.
You have a special permit?
You're right.
This is all him.
Just the one that I... Yeah. That's the site plan for approval, special permit looks almost identical except... Are you gonna keep that one for yourself?
That's one, I'm trying to get the other. Chris had the one that I hadn't been buying.
No, no, we're all set.
That's the second site plan, but I need a second.
Can you take that one then? Right, here, give him this one. You need one more, there's another special permit.
What's the special permit?
Yeah.
Yeah, there isn't a...
So you can have that one back.
The reason I didn't, I didn't waste paper, because they're exactly the same, they're duplicates, so I didn't, I gave the board, there's no sense in wasting. That way you have two of each, all right?
Yep. Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. All right, do you have any, any questions at all tomorrow, or can I meet?
Yeah, this one.
He's in tomorrow, right?
We're gonna be in soon.
He knows my son well.
The name of the gentleman in the fire department should contact you.
James Broderick, I will give you this letter.
Did you work in going, it's all done?
Yeah, I did.
I can say, yeah.
Charlie, you can have a copy.
I mean, often times we walk through with our chief of emergency.
Give him a call, he's very assessable.
You want three of them?
Sure.
Thank you.
Right on time here. I assume you're ready? You have paperwork for it?
Yep.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Do you have any other references?
Yeah, we have a letter.
Okay. Do you have any copies?
Is that your phone?
Yep. Does it write amount?
Sure, there is on my copy, but I'll look at it.
All right. Hopefully it's the same copy. All right, do you want to briefly, you have...
Sure.
Just a couple minutes. What this is, is Raleigh Village Green for posting sure for the remainder of the project so that some according to our, according to our permit, so they can release some building permits, certificate of arguments.
I'm one of them. I wanna make sure I'm going in tomorrow.
That's very active, protect your interest, Larry, just a three minute background.
Yeah, that's basically it. They came in last week to get their certificate of compliance, and there is provision in the certificate of votes from the board that prior to doing that, they either have to add all the improvements completed and made, or they have to ensure that, or post a surety with the town to complete the improvements. So I went through a list of things that is, that remains to be done, and those things are attached as Exhibit A to the, to the Form S that Steve has, that he's presenting tonight. Very briefly, those improvements to be done are the...
Do you have a copy of that?
Yeah.
A few dollars we can go?
Yeah, take that, that's the original one.
Oh, okay.
Very quickly, those improvements are batuminous surface course, batuminous concrete firm, batuminous concrete sidewalk, completion of drainage, stone pavers in the cul-de-sac, loman seed fence landscaping, and then we added a contingency and prevailing wage rate factor of about 30 percent. So the total comes out to $112,500, which is on the copy that I got, what their surety is posted for in the form of a tripartite agreement with North Shore Bank and CSD Real Estate Development, which is, that's Charles Construction and the Baltimore ones.
Is the landscaping that remains to be done, is that just around the units, or is any of that within the buffer area?
It's, it's in that, that woods to the Maryfield Farm area, and it is the, it's not the landscaping around the units themselves.
Oh, it's not?
It's the landscaping other than right in front of the units.
Oh, I thought that was already done.
No, no, some of it's done, some of it's not.
And that's also to ensure that that multi-story, under-story buffer between Maryfield and the site, and just the world replacement.
And some of that had die or not, you know, come up, so this will cover that as well. That figure's 25,000.
I have an issue that got brought to my attention. It's supposed to go before the historic commission for the fence that was placed between the driveway and the adjacent property. Nobody went to historic, it's a vinyl fence, vinyl fences aren't allowed in the historic district. Now, all I need is an assurance that you're gonna go to it.
We, we did go in front after it was brought up, after it was done, we did go in front of the historic.
Have you got a certificate of appropriateness yet?
No, we had a hearing that the homeowner next door was right there, and they just heard everybody, but nothing ever came of it, there was never any...
You have to file, you have to file that, that board. I happen to know, because my significant one is the chair of the historic. Now, you've done a beautiful job out there, but that has to be resolved. Is that worth done? No?
No, it's, it remains to be done tomorrow. It's certainly falling for it.
Well, the fence was never on our plan.
No, it's not part of this.
Yeah, I think that was mitigation for the neighbor, right? Is that to help the neighbor up, because of the proximity of the project to their house that they bought after?
Yep.
But anything within 200 feet of Main Street is in a historic district, and I think you knew it, because you went before the one that's temporary signed, and you get approval, verbal approval of that, because it was temporary, I'm pretty sure of that, so, just needs to be resolved somehow.
Plan on completing the landscaping in the spring?
Yeah, definitely, that'd be nice.
All right, so we have your assurance that you will revisit this a little bit historically?
Yes.
Come up with it.
Are all the units completed?
No.
This...
How's, how's your sale?
Phase one's done. After we get going, pretty good. Initially, not too good. Wrong person trying to sell.
Was that because of the issues with the site and stuff?
No, I just, to me, I think we picked the wrong realtor initially.
You're on TV.
You don't need to, let's not digress.
But now you've got the right...
David, David, please. I just wanna make sure, Larry and I have got, I mean, that, anybody have any trouble with the numbers or the categories? It's research according to the plan and what we have in...
Is it enough?
Well, it's 30 percent on there.
30 percent over, so...
Well, I'll just say their first estimate was 50,000. After I got done with it, it's 112,000.
That's a good question.
I answered your question. It's a good indication.
More than ever, as far as I'm concerned. Just wish them like selling the units? Oh, yeah, I wish, I wish I'm the best, sure I do.
No, they have to secure it, I mean, that's, we learned that, I think, the reasons, you wanna take a look, please?
Sure.
Just gonna take another counsel on the board, since I know this was kind of, we put you on the agenda knowing the urgency of the issues.
Thank you, I was supposed to move in last Friday.
Yeah, they can't, they can't, they normally...
How many units now?
And also, the office is not mandated this time.
I appreciate it.
No, under agreement.
Well, maybe, one or five.
How many, how many got ready?
There's, just started foundation on another building. Then there's three buildings upstairs, eight units up, and we just started a four unit building.
How many going in there?
The bank's drawing it up, it should be all right.
Twenty-five?
Yes.
One unit.
Steve, Steve.
Quick question, Anna. What do you anticipate will be done with the final, final building?
Georgia Ralphans, sorry. Hopefully within a year.
Within a year, because I just noticed the completion date, this, this is January 31st, 2015, so you think it'll be wrapped up by then? All work completed?
I hope so.
Okay, nice. And, you know, if you're still on it, that's really...
You wanna change the date, wanna put more pressure on, what, what date, what's the two-year on it?
Or if we have to renew it, whatever, we'll do it.
I don't really have a problem, at least it's, it's there, at least it has a date.
Right, that's what I was looking for.
It's a great question, at least it has a date.
We just learned that, didn't we?
Yeah, we just did. That's what was going through my head.
You only have one copy? These typically are notarized, no? The bank didn't ask for it, and it's up to them, I guess. What did they say? No, it's up to, it's up to the lawyers and the bank.
Not sure it's very good.
It's an honest answer, it's an honest answer. Oh, you're not sure, you said not sure.
No, it's not. Steven Pedigal, the vice president of the bank, has signed it, so...
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, five lines.
I'll move that we accept the tripartite agreement.
Second?
Second by David Jaqueline, moved by Cliff Pierce. All is in favor?
Who can, who can sign on this?
Regular members, it's not a special permit.
You're regular.
No, I'm the alternate, I'm the...
You'll be running in the spring?
I'll see, what about it?
Well, we have a vacancy, so, not necessarily. Unfortunately, right, Jane, Chris?
Right, right.
Well, we may talk to you about that.
It could be our alternate.
As long as you're gonna run towards filling it, instead of running away.
Right.
Because if you're not, if you're not gonna stay on, then we'll talk her into it. Then we'll talk her into it.
Could you sign?
Thank you, David.
Let's get these signatures, and then we keep on schedule. I guess Larry, you have to hang in there, or what do you do while we come back?
No, not for that.
You ever go out and have Debbie make some copies of these, please? She's right outside.
Okay, thank you.
And just make like two more copies?
Okay.
All right, just so the board members know, the, the screening committee comprised of David Peterson, Chair of the Personnel Committee, Town Administrator Debbie Hegan, and three planning board members, Steve looking this up, went through a process that started on the 15th. The screening committee narrowed down the applicants to a number of people that came in to be interviewed, and that was on the 15th and the 20, no, 22nd and the 26th. And then subsequent to that, the field of applicants was narrowed down to the two applicants that we're interviewing tonight, based on the committee's assessment of those interviews. So this is a process tonight. The goal is to, for the board to, when Debbie comes in, she'll be helping to facilitate. And I'll, people will be asking questions. The applicant will have a chance to ask any questions to the board. We will keep it to a half an hour, and then at nine o'clock, that's a half an hour for each applicant, at nine o'clock or right before. Try to keep it to like 25 minutes to the interview, which I think is long enough with the questions that we have, right?
It's a grueling, actually.
Yeah, it is in public.
Yeah.
So, and that's about the time that we kept it to, everything is fairly, it's very consistent in the process, the process has been started, this was advertised back in October, and then there's a formalized process to get to this point. All right, so you all said?
You had to see...
No, the bank wants the original, right? What do they want?
Thank you very much. Good luck there.
Keep selling, and also that's...
Can I just have a question?
All of our, for that historic stuff, Steve?
Am I offset as far as being able to move in there now?
Far as words?
As far as...
You're finished with the planning board. The building inspector, if there are any other issues, will take it up.
Yep.
And if they involve the planning board, we'll get back to me, like you did before. Because he's really kind of the point man on the issuing... Because he's really kind of the point man on the issuing certificate of lock-in.
And I know you did all the stuff out in front, but he's probably gonna ask highway department to, you know, for their approval of what you did.
Yeah.
Because he's, he's the one that brought that up, so.
Yeah, the highway department, I know that was, yeah.
The state highway department. Ken Moore's probably gonna ask the state, if they're happy with, you know, what you did. Hi.
I tried to call the state to try to get some form that was in the packet, I guess. So you tried to get them to release it or whatever, and they said, no, you're all on file, you're all set. They usually don't send a letter.
Well, Ken will probably just wanna call. That's the only thing that I think, you know, needs to be done.
Yes, you have to work closely with the building inspector. Our permit has conditions, and that's our job to make sure those conditions are met.
I'm just curious on the timeframe that.
I hope so. This was a huge hurdle, I hope.
That's it. Tomorrow? Oh, great, okay.
All right, we need to go on for entries. Nice meeting you, welcome.
Nice meeting you. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Have a good holiday, everyone.
You too.
All right, so first, Debbie, did she get packets or she come home?
She said she was gonna have packets.
She said that some things this afternoon.
Yeah, but then she also asked stuff. Okay, Debbie? All right, so does any other, I just want the board, any other questions as to the process? And what our goal is tonight is actually to discuss it afterwards, again, it is open.
How many did you interview in person?
How many did we interview in person?
Six or seven?
Six or seven, yeah. Narrowing down from a field of about fifteen.
Yeah, we had about four.
No, about total.
Five, four, five.
When we actually interviewed. Because some didn't come in, you know.
Well, we had a lot more applicants, but we did, the screening committee had narrowed that down. And then there were some changes, we were trying to get more, two of them had backed up.
We were trying to get six to seven, I think we ended up with five.
Yes, because they had.
And then we also, we would've had three finals, and one withdrew at the last minute that was upstate tonight.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Gotcha, so who are we gonna see today? Kirk and Heidi?
Yeah, so we have Kirk on at eight. Each, each member has a set of questions and a package for each applicant in case you wanna write down answers to reflect upon later this evening. So the critical questions for each applicant.
And I'm going to spread the questions around.
Likely to do the last, I was just explaining it to Steve.
Right. But I will keep it, we really have to keep it to the timeframe.
Okay, so you're about five minutes behind right now, so. Ready?
Oh, no, don't pray a minute, sorry, I've got one other thing to say before, just so they know. Because you haven't, you just got this in front of you. The extensive references were checked on both candidates are in front of us tonight. And just for the, as a summary, the references were exemplary. So, just so you know, I should not weigh in on. So, you know, sorry, if you ask that question afterwards, which you can.
Do you have to split with these questions?
When we discuss it. We are, consistently we do, each person's gonna get the same.
Well, if there's something that pops into your head, you have to ask.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
Yeah, as long as it doesn't, yeah, okay. Just so you know, the references have been done and there were no issues. They were. Okay.
Someone's coming in close today.
Good evening, this is Kirk Baker, this is the planning board.
Hi, Kirk.
Mr. Chairman, you'll do the introductions?
Kirk, nice to meet you.
Hey, good to see you again.
Cliff Pierce, we met the other day.
Larry Graham.
Larry Graham is our review engineer.
Chris Thorpe.
Good to meet you. Steve Cassiottis. Good dear Jake, what's.
Steve and David are actually full-time members, comprising a five-member board.
Okay.
Then we also have an associate member.
Okay.
There's Chris Thorpe.
Full chair on.
But he obviously will be participating in the interview process. How was the traffic tonight?
Actually, not too bad. It's, you know, we're already assumed to be on one twenty-eight, it's kind of slow, but it opens up.
It's in your first time with this road here, so we are, we are gonna move it along.
Okay.
You don't have to feel like you're, unless, unless you're stumped or you have, you know. There are some, and Debbie will be signaling me as well, so. So I'm, again, I'm gonna start with the first two questions, I might just go actually this way because these guys.
Yeah, we are, we interrogate you.
And also, you know, at the end of the last couple minutes, if you have any questions for the board.
Okay.
Kirk, why are you interested in the position of Raleigh Town Planner?
Well, my background has been in planning, I have twelve, twelve years of experience in planning as an urban planner, and I have like a wide array of experience in, not just in urban planning, but also in environmental planning as well. But I, I moved here with my wife for a job that she had about two years ago. And so before that, I was in, I had, you know, I had gained twelve years of experience with the cities of Suffolk, Virginia for about eight years. And before that, I was with a small town outside of West Salem in North Carolina called Kernersville. And between, you know, throughout that time, I learned how to use GIS, geographic information systems. I learned about historic preservation, I learned about, we had a, in Virginia, we had a, the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act, which is what led me into the environmental aspect, we administered that. And I also did site plan review for like large commercial and residential subdivisions. And I have experience in doing flat review for subdivisions.
And locally, you've worked with Beverly and.
Yes, yes.
Doing some awesome, helping Winchester earlier as well.
Yeah, I did some.
So there's some local, it's just not all out of state.
Yeah.
You've already, I don't need to ask the second question because you've already answered it. Chris, if you wanna briefly.
What do you consider your greatest strength in this position?
Well, I feel that my analytical skills are probably my greatest strengths as a planner in terms of analyzing land use compatibility. And when, for example, taking an application or a site plan or something, trying to understand the different variables that are working that inter, that interweave together. And like, you know, the environmental aspect, the layout aspect, the traffic, and all of those different variables. And learning to like separate them and analyze them and to actually, to review them in terms of compliance with existing code.
Is there any skills that you think you need to sharpen to take this position, or?
Well, I think one of the things that you guys expressed interest in was in terms of writing, like, or developing and amending code and writing regulations. And I have, like, only so much, or I actually only have indirect. I mean, I don't have actual direct experience in that myself. I've watched it.
In Massachusetts, too.
Yeah, yeah, in Massachusetts, and, but I haven't actually directly been involved in that. So that's something I would need to learn. And, but, you know, I have been, like I said, I've, I've had experience with different codes, like from North Carolina, Virginia, and coming to Massachusetts and learning, you know, the Massachusetts codes. So I have experience between, like, in a lot of different places.
Which segues the next question. Those are kinda yes and no.
Sure, and you've already answered, though, you've worked in various town settings and noticed that. You mentioned urban planning, this is pretty, this is small-town planning, I suppose, does that. You know, were you hoping to land in a bigger city, or is this working in a small community like Raleigh something that would also meet your, you know, your own career goals?
Actually, I feel like that my specialty has been small-town planning. The first job that I had was with Kernersville in North Carolina.
How many, what's the population of that, just as a comparable?
I mean, it's probably about, like, I would think about five thousand. It's probably comparable to here. I mean, Suffolk, Virginia was like probably sixty thousand, but it actually, for that area, was a small town. The reason it had like a large population, it was also a large land area, but it was, it was because the city merged with the county.
County, gotcha.
So it was essentially a small town on the outside of, of the Hampton Roads area. So my, my experience is in small-town planning, and I feel like that's become my specialty.
Sure, and are you familiar with the open meetings law in Massachusetts? Okay, and, and all the state ethics laws?
Yeah, conflict of interest and, yeah.
Okay, and, and have you taken the conflict of interest courses?
I, we, when I was over in Beverly, we did like a review of it. Well, not, no, I didn't do it on, I didn't, haven't done any coursework.
You call it a course.
Yeah, right, right.
I haven't done any coursework on it, but I, like, then in a meeting in which it was covered, got to be a little off this cover.
But you realize you would have to do that?
Yeah, I can.
It's not a, and the state makes it fairly easy, because I allow you to take it online.
Oh, okay, okay.
And is there anything in your schedule that would cause any conflict with twice monthly meetings on Wednesdays?
Oh, okay.
David, can you, since you've been here a long, I'm just gonna skip to David only, Steve, I'm gonna come back to you. Because David's been longer on the board, understands the way it's set up. Six, David?
The town planner will be the department of one. Although you share space with Kind Con and Health. Meaning there will be no clerical assistance provided by the town planner to the town planner. No day-to-day supervisor, which you gotta supervise yourself. The town planner will be a department head and report to a five-member elected planning board, which is us. The town planner will need to be a self-starter and be able to work independently on his own. Or with the assistance of the board on occasions. Have you ever worked in this type of independent setting before?
Well, I have not been the sole town planner before, but I do work well on, on my own and under my own initiative.
We'll try to hear.
I consider myself a very disciplined person.
Where are you coming from on a day-to-day basis to come to work?
Oh, Winchester. But the, I guess I would just point out that I, I, I do work, you know, well on my own in terms of being disciplined and being able to set a schedule and to have goals and to be able to reach those goals.
Part of that, kind of seven, kind of segues in.
Yeah, it's seven, too. The town planner will be responsible for taking planning board meeting minutes and writing letters and doing the minutes of the meeting.
Lovely memos.
Yeah, memos on behalf of the planning board. Have you ever taken minutes for a board?
Lots of minutes, I've done that a few times. I'm used to the letter and doing the letters and the, you know, the technical aspects of running a meeting and getting a meeting ready and advertising and doing the, you know, adjacent property owner notifications, things like that.
That's good, because there's a lot of that, so. All right, Steve?
I've got no questions.
Number eight, please, you wanna do it?
It's part-time, budget for twenty-two hours, pushing off of benefits such as health insurance paid lead benefits. Is it your intent to work solely at this position, or will you seek another part-time position to supplement your rate cap?
Well, I mean, in terms of, right now, I'm actually working a part-time job in the mornings. So I would.
Can you answer what that is?
It's with Barnes and Noble. Both sellers. But it's, it would, it would depend on like how, I mean, I know we discussed this before about the flexibility of the scheduling. I can be flexible and, you know, whatever I need to do. Well, one of the things I've been looking at is to, is to basically, you know, operate more like a consultant in a sense, so these part-time positions are kind of like that. I mean, if, if, if I, if I left the Barnes and Noble's position, but then, and this was my only position, I mean, I'm not, I mean, you know, my wife is the main, the main source of income right now, and I'm, I'm happy to focus on, on, on one, on one position, but, I mean, I, you know, it would be possible that I would consider maybe taking on one other consulting, you know, consulting position.
It looks like you work for the city of Suffolk and the city of Kernersville simultaneously, is that right? So you've.
I'm sorry.
It looks like your, your jobs overlap in Suffolk, Virginia and Kernersville, North Carolina.
No, no, they, that must have been.
It's typo, okay.
It must be a typo.
This is November, two thousand four to two thousand eleven in Suffolk and ninety-nine to two thousand thirteen in Kernersville. So that's just a typo or something.
Oh, no, it was two thousand and three and, and that must be, yeah.
Okay.
I just probably refer you to my.
Resident.
Resident, yeah, two thousand and three was when I left Suffolk. And we've got the same thing.
Number nine, I wanna just be consistent, and we can free the rest if we have time to do.
All right. Well, I guess it's our goal to have a position by the end of December, if you're offered the position, we can be able to start working and be here for the twenty-two hours, and I mean, I think it's, there's quite a bit of work in that twenty-two hours, isn't there?
Yes.
You may be saying, there may be this much work to do for the, for the next meeting, you have to have all this ready for all of us.
Yeah.
You got a problem with that?
Well, you're saying, what did you say the date range was?
Starting on December.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that would be, yeah.
I think you also realize there's flexibility.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, it's, it's not like.
Yeah.
Boot camp.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and I wanna be like, you know, I would wanna be fair to my current employer, you know, I wouldn't wanna just quit on them, but I, like.
Well, you may not have to, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, and we.
I don't think you'll have to, oh, you won't have to.
Yeah.
Have you mentioned to them that you've been?
Oh, they know what my, when I, when I started working there, I told them that, you know, that my hours were limited to a certain, certain time.
Offer number.
But did you tell them you were looking for other, posting off?
Yeah, that my intent was to do planning consulting type, type work.
You haven't moved much, you've just moved from?
I, we've been in Winchester for, for two years.
Since your wife came?
Yeah, since my wife.
Committed to staying in Massachusetts?
Yeah, yeah, we wanna stay. My wife's originally from here.
You said she's a reporter, right?
Yeah.
On the newspaper.
Yeah, she's a reporter, so, I mean, she's found where she, the job that she wants to be at, and, you know, I, I like it here. I mean, she's from here and we've, you know, done several moves in order to probably get here. And so, you know, we've been here two years, we like it, so.
All right, James, have a turn?
As the town planner, would it be, would it be your responsibility to act as an advocate for change and lead the planning board? Or would your role be to implement the policy decisions set by the board?
Well, I feel like it, there's a little bit of both. Would be involved in a sense to advocate for good planning policy, I mean, as, as a planner. I mean, you know, with a certain technical expertise, I guess, and opinions about, you know, sort of, I mean, perhaps to persuade, you know, or if I feel like it's necessary to persuade and to make my case to what I think would be appropriate, but I do feel that, you know, you know, I'm being hired to also, you know, perform the will of the, you know, of the appointed board or the, the elected boards and, and the will of the people. I mean, so, I mean, I'm not, you know, here to force or to try to get away, but I need to express an opinion if, if necessary.
I agree. Anybody else wanna expand upon that? I mean, independence, but, you know. Because as you know, in every town, it's politics and you learn it quickly.
Well, I think once you're in, you understand some of the issues of the town, then you're better off able to assist the planning board and.
Right, it's a dynamic, and there's a certain one, you know, it's a dynamic board, it's changes happen, you know, changes happen.
I think that at least some mornings should be here because of the interaction with the building inspector on certain issues.
Oh, this regular, yeah, regular officer is very important.
Yeah, I would think that's sort of my question, is yours gonna be, is it like four hours a day or can it be two, eight-hour days? How, how does that work?
Some of that's flexible, isn't it? Well, typically, I know Katrina, we're trying to have the planning board manned at regular hours for public access, at least, you know, three times a week.
At least, I would think, yeah.
Because everybody can't just go on one day. So that's why Katrina, but she was available on another day by appointment, someone called she.
Well, you know.
But she, it's to take that twenty-two hours and split it amongst. the meetings, uh, public access hours, and also hours when you can just work on your own to get all that clerical stuff done, you know, so.
Is there a requirement, how much time it has to be in the office for all the public?
No.
What question?
I think the board, the board can discuss that also. Eleven, sorry, eleven, Jane?
Oh, eleven, okay. Uh, the rally, yes, yeah, yes. The Raleigh planning board is busy, is a busy town board, we have numerous filings with special permits, site plans and subdivisions. Please describe your experience working on these types of filings.
I have experience with all of all of the, the special permits, I think, um, the um when I was in Suffolk, we we call them special permits in in Kernersville, when I went to Suffolk, we called them condition and use permits. So I worked on a lot of those, um, and um, site plans, I reviewed um many, many site plans, both residential and commercial and industrial uh site plans. So um, my, in terms of like technical ability on those ones are pretty solid.
I put thirteen. Yeah, and this may vary from state to state, but um can you describe the differences between special permits and site plan review?
Well, special permits are, with my understanding, that certain land uses um require special approval by a special permitting agent, which can either be the planning board or in some cases, I guess, selectmen or city council or a combination of the both.
Or the zoning board of appeals.
Or the zoning board of appeals, uh, where, you know, maybe one of them, like the planning board might make a, in some cases, the planning board would make a recommendation. When I was in Suffolk, the planning board uh made the recommendations to the city council. And in Beverly, the planning board was the, you know, the um, in many cases, was the decis- decision maker. So it just kinda depends, but I've had experience, um, you know, but yeah, with a special, with the spe- that's with a special permit. And um, I guess with the site plans, uh, the site plans are really just for, you know, like a development application to develop a particular site. And they can be, I understand they can be administrative uh in some jurisdictions, but I think a lot of Mass- Massachusetts jurisdictions, the site plan is is usually reviewed by the planning boards, mainly because the planning board has the technical expertise uh in terms of of land use to be able to analyze and to make comments and make decisions in regards to site plan. But they are two different things, I think, the special use permit is with the use and the allowing the user making a recommendation about in in regards to a use, whereas the site plan is a is a document for approving a particular type of layout and design.
Yep, okay. Uh, number fourteen, uh, and I don't know how familiar you are with the intricacies of our state zoning uh law, but many people consider it to be quirky, confusing, and not not conducive to good planning.
So I want.
I want you to assume that you have the ability to utolatably change it in some way. Can you think of anything that you would do to change it?
Well, I think, you know, one of the things I noticed since I've I've been here was the approval not required process. Whereas I I I kind of, I I've kind of felt that that leaves the jurisdictions open to creating lots or allowing lots to be altered or modified or created and actually not be buildable. Whereas in, when I was in Virginia, that there was a, we we did minor subdivisions, we had a minor subdivision review process, uh, which I, you know, thinking on it, it 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 depends on the jurisdiction, some minor subdivision uh reviews would be actually have to be approved by the planning board. In in our case in Virginia, it was administrative and the planning director actually reviewed minor subdivisions and signed off on those. But, you know, I I kinda find that kind of review, having it like on a plat and and it has to have certain notations and be s- have a a surveyor seal uh on it uh to be a a safer, because you're actually certifying, you sign off on it, and when you do the subdivision, you're certifying that the lot is is buildable. So my understanding is I I think here, one of the the issues might be with like in a town like Raleigh, where you have, you're all the lots are on septic, that you might run in, that using the A and R process, you could actually, and that's probably from what I understand, I was talking to Debbie, that that there is a process in place about, uh, that prevents, um, that you would have to get a pert test in order to to create a lot. But that would actually be part of a minor subdivision process. So that would be one thing I would think would be uh be altering, modifying the A and R.
That's one thing I would change too. The next question, want we move on?
Yep.
After assuming the professional planner position, um, what would be your priorities beyond meeting statutory requirements and doing the administrative work, et cetera?
Well, I I would like to get a feel for, I guess, what the, in a way, what the the goals of the town of of Raleigh, what overall, like, because I know it probably involves a lot of, um, in in terms of, um, like, what are your, the goals in terms of environmental and historic preservation and um site development and all of that to get a a good idea, um, a grasp of what the overall goals are. Which I I I understand already in your master plan, which actually I've made a copy of before, I didn't want to cover any of that.
Which kinda blends into sixteen, so you might as well go sixteen.
Um, yeah, uh, are there any collaborative projects with either town committees, local nonprofits, state federal governments that uh you think that the planning board should work to accomplish?
Well, um.
I might add a little piece to that, maybe, and and also mention whether you've written any grants or any.
I, and actually, that's that's probably one of the.
Get to the first part of the question, then the end.
Oh, the, um, it.
Collaborative projects, yeah.
Yeah, collaborative projects, um, uh, I would have to give it some thought, I mean, I have to admit you, like, um, in terms of, um, I mean, do you mean like between like, um, the the planning department and conservation or?
Yeah, historic, I mean, it could be anything really.
I I actually, four thousand would be a great.
With the community preservation, community.
C P.
C P A.
The C P A. Yeah, so.
There's also recreational committees in town, um, historical, uh, outside groups, there's a bunch of you know, Essex Green Belt, Autobahn, the Fedible, I mean, there's a lot of Fedible. There's a lot of protected land around here that's only exists because of collaboration.
I have to admit, I would, I would.
You have to learn that.
So far about exactly, I guess.
Some of it because it's very wet.
Right, that's the whole options. Yeah.
I I guess about the, also to point out, what you were saying about the grant writing, that is another, probably another area that I would need some work on, I mean, I've, I, when I was in Beverly, I had started like assisting in another gentleman in in developing um a grant proposal. And, uh, but it never really went anywhere, I did the, I did the, um, I I did a document for it, but it didn't actually ever, it never came to fruition.
But you feel as though your writing skills are strong enough to take some of those?
I feel my writing skill is very strong, um, in terms of the, um, you know, of actually having under my belt and on my resume, grant writing, you know, I can't say that I do. You know, so just be honest. It's like one of those things, it it's something I should learn and and I would be very open, I just, it hasn't been part of my experience.
Oh, thank you, open to it, thanks.
Uh, seventeen, Raleigh needs to expand its commercial tax base while at the same time, uh, through effective planning and zoning, uh, retain that small town and scenic characteristics that we like so much. Um, and what role should the planning board play in achieving that that balance?
It really comes down to, I think, exercising the the correct land use control. I mean, we have to look at the master plan and the bylaws and the zoning bylaws and make sure that they are achieving the goals that that you're trying to achieve in terms of like, you know, fostering, you know, healthy development and economic development, but also at the same time protecting those historic assets and the environmental assets as well, so. So really, you know, would be something, probably, one of the projects we probably should get into is to like take a look and at the, um, the, I guess, the the permitting history and to see, to make sure that, you know, that it's on track with the goals that you've set out, set forth in in the master plan and that we are actually achieving, you know, development with protection of those assets.
Do you see some, any similarities between Winchester and Raleigh?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I think Winchester has, it's it's a small town, um, even though it's in a suburban area, but it's still got a very small-town feel to it, I mean, if you, um, if you were to go to the downtown, it it definitely carries that more than it would be as cer- you know, more than it would be as a, you know, a suburb, I think. So, yeah, I mean, there are definitely similarities, I mean, uh, what they are trying to achieve downtown is 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 really the same thing to like make it look small and, um, or not to make it look small, but to make it look historic and to to, you know, keep us that historic character and aesthetic alive despite aid, you know, changes in the economy.
Last question, which is depicted here as a Buddhist question. You can actually, it can be a very brief answer. You may or may not have much time up to this point to learn about Raleigh as a town. But in terms of development, can you tell us what the town, in your opinion, is doing right and what we're doing wrong?
Well, it looks like that in terms of preservation.
Did you arrive during the night or day?
I have to, I have to say, in terms of actually being here, well, the both times I've been here, I've actually been at night, but I, um, I have seen it from the map, the the mapping, so I have a good idea, I mean, I know that, you know, that you're bounded by an I ninety-five on the west, uh, that that one thirty-three cuts cuts straight through, on the east, you're bounded, you have the Atlantic Ocean and a huge wetland area that, um, you know, that 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 makes up that in like a, it looks like a quarter of the area of the city.
Great marsh.
Yeah, marsh, and, um, and you have like the, um, the one A and the one, um, highway one corridors.
But but just in your, after, you know, learning a little bit about the layout, what in your opinion do you think?
Well, I guess what I would point out is that it looks to me that that you guys are doing an excellent job at preserving the agr- like the agricultural aspect and the conservation aspect, the open space, which is a key, you know, it's a it's a key aspect, I think, of I think that's what you were calling for in the, uh, in your master plan, was to protect those, the the agriculture and the the conservation, the open space assets as well, so. And to me, it just, uh, from what I've driven around and seen it, I mean, there's a lot of his history that's 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 here in terms of the architecture, including this building. You see that that's been preserved, so that.
If it was fourteen out, you wouldn't say.
This leads into one quick question, I see down in Beverly, working for Tina, who I know quite well, that you're working with the Historic Commission, what what does that work involve?
The the Historic Commission.
Are you the coordinator for the Historic?
Yeah, I did the coordination for the Historic Commission.
Monthly meetings, et cetera.
Yeah, yeah, I set up the meetings, the, um, you know, and for the historic, in that case, I didn't do minutes for that, we actually had a minutes taker, but in terms of setting up the legal ads and 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 all that, I took care of all that.
You have any questions for the board and then I'll give, gonna give the board one more crack, because we need to wrap up.
Oh, okay, yeah, I was, probably in terms of what, in in terms of projects, like, maybe you guys could tell me, like, um, what what's the, I guess, the diversion or dispersion of of projects in terms of, you have like a lot of site plans, special permits and.
In other words, what are we doing right now?
Yeah.
Why are we here?
Not right, just right now, potentially.
Actually, could be, the town goes your way, spurts.
Yeah, like everywhere, but, you know, we've had a full range of residential versus commercial, uh, projects over the years. Gone through very rapid growth, with respect to commercial as well as residential. Most of the commercials mostly on the Route One corridor, and that's pretty much, uh, used up now, but, you know, there's still some opportunities for that. There's a, there's still a lot of land that's not protected in Raleigh that would could be subject to residential development and that's the big, uh, task in front of the planning board is to try to see that 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 land is developed in the right way.
Okay.
Explain to him the one tool that we do have on that that is being used, the open space.
Resource development.
Yeah, that, I don't know if you're familiar with open space residential developments, if they have those in Virginia, or maybe they call themselves the planned unit developments or something.
We call them, I think, clusters of the.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I've reviewed those as well.
It is an option, it's kinda like, yeah.
But our, we have bylaws that allow that type of development, trying to promote a conservation as much as possible and the preservation of natural features. Uh, and this board is, you know, in recent years, has been very much in favor of those types of developments that we've approved uh, three or four, um, in recent years, so.
And we have to to direct the construction.
Right.
And also try to retain, try to restore and retain an actual town center.
Yeah, no, it's a small town, but we we have been involved in some interesting projects, one in the, uh, in our so-called town center, which at one point was pretty rundown, but under our, what we call our New England Village Development Bylaw, uh, it really has been rehabilitated, I think, and I think it's, it's a place that people now like to go and buy a cup of coffee and.
It was just a pass-through before, mainly, mainly.
And through our OSRD process, we have preserved a lot of open space, and we recently, we recently, uh, uh, approved a country club OSRD, so that will, um, all the fairways and the greens will be preserved as open space and there's a development off to the side. So, you know, we do some interesting.
But before us at this time, uh, there are several large projects that are being built, that are ongoing, and these are, like Cliff was saying, these are clustered.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, um, with a fair amount of open space involved.
No, a lot of open space.
Thirty, twenty-five, yeah, and and restricted, some of it is actually, uh, has restrictions and covenants for perpetu- for perpetuity, so.
Mm-hmm, and then the Girl Scout, Girl Scout camp is gonna present some interesting options and opportunities.
It's a large, large part.
Is it two hundred and thirty acres?
Over two hundred, I guess, yeah. And and in Massachusetts, if, uh, you know, have, usually you have a a a timeframe whereby the town gets first cracked. And either buying it or doing something with it collaboratively with some of the groups. Like, which is lucky, because it can't just be, you know, something with a lot of dough.
Right, snap it up.
Right, right away.
Put a casino on it.
Anyone else, anyone else before?
I think that while this is a small town, there are a lot of interesting, cutting-edge projects that we do from time to time, that's my opinion.
And we never, we never know what's coming.
No, there's also a lot of day-to-day, like, uh, regulation of cell towers, signs.
Yeah.
You know, I think it's mundane, but when you take it in its entirety, it it affects the character of the town. If you don't, if you don't pay attention, if you just ignored, you know, fifty signs. We tried it, but there's only so much, we're not a enforcement board, we're a permitting board.
Most, most of your college experience is not planning?
It's geography, I started my my degree, well, yeah, my my master's was in in geography and that's where I got into G I S, geographic information systems, and, um, that's what kinda led to my first job out of school was I was in Kernersville.
Most of your jobs have been?
Plan, yeah, then, because of the G I S, I got the job in Kernersville because it was a G I S planner position. So I did mapping and then also, and it was a small town, so I did a lot of different things and, um, and worked in tandem with the director of the of that town to, um, like, on. And it was a small town, so I did a lot of different things and, and worked in tandem with the director of the, of that town to, like, on. Not just mapping, but also like, like comprehensive plan analysis and then modifying the comprehensive plan and then. And also casework in terms of applications that went before the planning board, I made, presented applications to the planning board and all that, so.
All right, thank you, all right, we're out of time. Thank you very much, Kirk, good to see you again.
Good to see everyone again.
Nice to see you again, yeah.
It's good to see you.
Good to see you.
Nice meeting you.
Nice seeing you again.
Nice meeting you, Kirk.
Nice meeting you.
The intent is to have all of this happen very quickly, which we already said to you last time.
Okay, okay, well, it's great, great meeting everyone.
It's nice meeting you.
Have a good night.
Thanks for coming in at night.
Yeah.
Happy Sunday.
Thank you.
All right, it's Heidi, the same format, is that okay?
Yep.
And if you switch your, Debbie, it's nice, I mean, there's a lot of information here, you know? The references are here, recovery letters here, your applications here, and a resume is here. And so. Heidi Murphy, as you can see, it's kind of, is a different, in terms of, you know. Having many, many years in a, at a town. So, that's an interesting contract. Can I say again? Kirk Bryant.
What peers we met before? Oh, hey, Chris Thorndt.
Steve Kessos.
Nice to meet you.
Dave Jolies.
Hi, nice to meet you.
H L Graham Associates and Associates.
Oh, okay.
Engineering firm. You would ask whether we have a view on it in person. It's a similar format, kind of going around, so you were, I already got through it with the screening committee?
Yes.
Keep it to twenty-five minutes. And it's a full board now, and Chris also, it's a full board, and Chris is associate membership of that format. Which is always great to have. So I'm gonna start and then it goes along, and then at the end, obviously, you'll have a chance to take a shot at us.
Okay.
Well, you're interested in, some of these I've already had, but we're on TV, why are you interested in the position of Raleigh Town Planner?
I'm interested for two reasons, primarily, prior to applying, I had actually researched many of your bylaws and regulations and. What struck me as interesting is all the proactive work that the town has already done in terms of long-range planning and bylaws and regulations. You have the right to farm by law, you have a demolition delay by law, you have the New England Village District by law, which a lot of communities don't actually have. Design guidelines per se for their community, you adopted the Community Preservation Act, I think, in two thousand and one. They're one of the first communities in the Commonwealth, we found first to do so, and because of that, you get the full fifty-two percent match. So you've done a lot of work in the area of historic projects. Yes, well, you know, it's a common law, kind of, knocked away, our percentages, and you've also purchased a lot of open space and done a lot of historic projects, so. For all those reasons, and in addition to that, because it's part-time, and I would actually like to have more time to be at home with my children. And have a job that allows me to pick them up after school, those are all the reasons why I'm interested.
Thank you, and. Obviously, you might want to give the, so we can move along, also, you can keep a succinct background and experience in. Any areas of planning that you think emphasize as better career.
Okay, well, I've been working in planning since I was about the age of twenty-two, I started working for the town of North Reading as a planning assistant.
Well, you'll have to tell us over the years.
Okay.
You gave it away.
I mean, I guess I just, I sort of, I sort of learned from the ground up, I started right out of college as like the planning assistant slash secretary. Moved up to be the planning director on the town of Palom, issued building permit, CEO's reviewed site plan, subdivision, et cetera. In New Hampshire, yes, correct, worked for, then the town of North Andover for approximately seven years. I was initially the town planner, so I was responsible for writing bylaws, things like site plan review, subdivision regulations, A and R. Was promoted internally approximately two to three years after that as community development director, which at that point, that position was primarily managerial and grant writing. I stayed, like I said, I worked there for seven years, and then I was in the town of North Reading for another seven, and that position, I sort of did a conglomeration of all.
What would you consider your strengths in the job as a planner?
Um, I would say my two biggest strengths, my knowledge of rules and regulations, state laws, rules and regulations as well as the communities. And writing reviews for the planning board, and then also grant writing. I think I've received approximately seven million dollars in grants.
Pretty impressive, yeah, is there anything you think you need to get up to speed with before you take the position, or you?
Well, personally, I, yeah, I would actually want to rely on the knowledge sort of of the planning board at first to get started, because I can read all the rules and regulations I want. But you actually know the town, so like if we were to work on.
That's a good point.
The bylaw, like the proposed bylaw for marijuana, I'm not gonna attempt to go look at parcels, because there could be a history. Of certain parcels of land that you have that I don't have, because you've been here longer than me, I'm, I'm new. So, yes, I think I would want the background of the, of the history of different parcels of land.
All right, and so, this next question, I think you've already pretty well mentioned, you worked in government settings before.
Yes.
You're familiar with all the state ethics laws and.
Correct, the annual test.
Opening meeting laws and.
Yep.
You mentioned you have, and, you know, we all, I'm sure have family, any restrict, limitations on your ability to be here twice a month for a Wednesday evening meeting?
None at all.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna just keep moving to the next one, just to get it off the list. Every other city you've been to has a bigger planning department, it seems, as though, in this instance, it's a department of one person.
Yes.
Does that offer any unique challenges to you, do you think you're able to manage yourself on a daily basis to, yeah?
No, it doesn't offer any challenges, if I, if I, the reason why it doesn't is if I hadn't learned from the ground up, I would say it would offer me challenges, but. My first five years working in planning was being a secretary, a planning secretary, so. I pretty much know all the facets of planning from the ground up to the advanced work, so I don't, I don't, and I type fast. So I type about ninety words per minute, so I don't feel like that would be problematic for me.
And I'll just follow up, where you'd be the department head and also the administrative assistant, do you think that would, would those administrative duties?
Bother me?
Bother you?
Nope, I have no problem taking mine as, I, I actually, in my last position, I usually, like, if I write a memo for the planning board, I would fax it to like. The planning board engineer, as well as the developer, as well as their attorney, so that they had all that information. And the entire planning board. Well, just so that you have, every, any package that, so that they would have my comments ahead of time, so they don't walk into a meeting blindsided. So I'm used to, I'm used to interacting with the developers and the public, whether it's fax, email, in person, that's all part of my job.
Yeah, I noticed that, I mean, that was a strength to be prepared for the meeting.
Yes.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip number seven because it says.
You can skip.
Problems.
Is this bad that I'm getting questions?
No, no.
It says.
No, it's the overlap.
I know you can take notes. This position is part-time and budgeted for twenty-two hours per week, position does offer benefits such as self-insurance, paid benefits. Is your intent to work solely at this position, or will you seek another part-time position to supplement your income?
My intent is to work solely at this position, I have no interest in working two part-time positions at all.
I'll hit the next one, our goal is to have someone in this position at the end of December, is there any problem with that if you're offered the position?
No, sir, we covered that at the interview when I said I would be available to start. But some of us who weren't there, yes, I know, I apologize.
Apology accepted. Did it seem like he was there or something?
I remember you three.
He could have walked, been walking through. He's in town hall.
Want me to enter next one?
Uh, sure.
As town planner, you would be, it would be your responsibility to act as an advocate for change and lead the planning board? Or would it be the role to be an implement policy decisions set by the board?
Oh, that's rough, because in all honesty, I think it's, I think it's a portion, I think there's actually a portion of both, to be fair. And I'm not trying to get out of the question, but I think I am supposed to bring new ideas to the planning board or new laws as they come about, like. Let's just say the law that was just passed about CPA, it was just in the Tribune, so now, like, you can use some funds to actually. If you have like an athletic field, you can use it to rebuild them, which, I, you know, to me, that's something I should be passing on to, I think. When I go to conferences or read stuff on mass planners, I think that that's information you should be aware of, so that you can go ahead and instruct me whether or not. That's something we should be pursuing, and then as a policy setter, well, I think you're ultimately, I think I'm the conduit. I mean, I'm the person who recommends, I'm an advisory position, I recommend to you, and the ultimate decision is whether or not you want to actually go forward with it, so. I don't know if I completely answered the question, but I think it's a combination of both.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we mentioned that one of the goals we had was to revisit our, what are they, seven or eight year old? Last revision of the rules and regulations, or maybe longer.
Oh, longer than that.
The two thousand, right, maybe, and well, that's a pretty substantial document that. And with agreement that may have, may have been left behind in the course of doing some, you know, like you said, fairly creative revisions in our zoning bylaws. It takes a lot of work to do both.
Yes.
Even though they do work together.
I don't have a problem with drafting, I actually had to do that on my last position.
The town's rules and regs?
Well, I had to go through the subdivision rules and regs and actually sort of compare and contrast other communities and then update them accordingly.
Can I ask why you left your last, last position, it seemed to be a pretty good one.
A, a good reason?
No, a good, good position for a planner.
Well, there are numerous reasons, but to condense it quickly, the department, we had.
This was in North Reading.
This was in North Reading, I'm sorry.
Just the adaption, remember, some people.
To be, I'm sorry, all right, to clarify.
Name, please name the position where.
There was, I was a community planning director, community planning administrator, it was an assistant planner slash GIS position, and then there was a secretary. And the assistant planning position.
In North Reading.
In North Reading, yes, the assistant planning position was cut, and there was sort of an internal struggle, DPW, I think, was trying to take it, so. When the person left for two years, that position remained vacant, and in addition to that, there was, well, like I said, it was a marital thing, but. There was some political struggle between the planning board that was elected and the town administrator, and at the same time. I had some personal issues and it just sort of all kind of came together and I was laid off, so. I would go into further detail, but it's, I, is that, I don't know, that's enough.
That is your question?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, obviously, you were very, you were very open with our town administrator about.
Yes.
References and so forth, so there was no issues with, with that. The tough question, number ten, with your experience, the other question, Jean, eleven?
I think we already know this, we do.
I know, we can go.
But we're going by the, by the rules.
We have to be consistent.
The Raleigh Planning Board is a busy town board, we have numerous filings for special permit site plans and subdivisions. Please describe your experience working on these types of filings.
Um, sure, well, I have reviewed subdivisions up to approximately sixty lots at a time, that was in North Andover, that was when we had sort of the building boom. Site plans, I, I actually worked on the Lucen Building, which was the old AT&T in North Andover, that's over a million square feet. Special permits, wireless, I'm trying to think back, but there was something. Well, special permits were site planned, there are special permits in North Reading, they weren't in North Andover. There's pretty much no type of application, it was a Form A, a subdivision, an OSRD, any kind of special permit under forty-eight-nine that's regulated by the town. I haven't written reviews on or reviewed.
Steve, I'm gonna go back to you on sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, so I didn't forget which of your interests in anyways are those things, so.
Oh, you're not gonna let Kirk go?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay, so you want me to change my glasses again, bummer.
Like me, on, off, on, off.
Please explain your knowledge of land use planning, how have you used land use planning in your prior work experience?
Um, well, my knowledge of land use planning is, I would categorize it as very extensive, but if you're looking for like the basic land use planning in terms of. Long-range planning, or if you're just looking for land use planning as it applies to reviewing projects, I've done both, I've written master plans, I've. Helped conservation write open space and recreation plans, reviewed and rewritten regulations of a numerous type. And land use planning itself, I'm familiar with forty-R, I permitted a project for that, with forty-three-D, which is the expedited permitting growth law. In addition to all the regular special permits under forty-A, as well as any projects under the subdivision control law, forty-one eighty-one. I don't know if you want me to be more expansive or.
I think that's good, right, Kirk?
No, you dropped a few numbers here.
Yes. The right number.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, where are we, thirteen?
Thirteen.
Can you describe the major differences between special permits and site plan review approvals and. Also whether you think those two processes should be conducted concurrently or separately?
Sure, site plan reviews in most communities are generally issued by the planning board, I think when I looked up here, it mentioned the planning board. Zoning Board and Board of Slockman, I'm not quite sure I figured that out entirely yet, and I did, I am just being honest, but um.
One, a special permit, to me.
Yes.
It's mainly with planning board.
It's mainly with planning, okay, and then.
By far.
But for a lot of communities, like an earth removal by law could be like the zoning board of appeals, but a special permit has criteria. That's usually laid out in the zoning by law that a project has to meet, or not meet to get issued a special permit, a site plan, and again, it depends on whether. Like, in some communities I've worked, it's actually a special permit, but assuming for purposes of this question it's not, then you also have to meet the criteria of. The site plan regulations, which are usually listed at the end of the regulations, but the major difference is site plans are typically used for business, retail, industrial. Special permits can also be done for that, but generally, they tend to be more of an overlay district. Most special permits I've ever issued are like wireless and they're an overlay district on top of a residential or another type of district.
Okay.
I'm trying to talk, talk fast.
Massachusetts zoning law is considered by many to be quirky, confusing, and not conducive to good land use development. I'd like you to assume that you have the ability to utilarily change anything in that law, can you think of any changes you'd like to make or would make?
I would have to say the ti- in my opinion, the timeframe, the timeframe given for applications for special permits, because. It's sixty days, I'm trying to think back, sixty days of public hearing and then ninety days to make a decision, and I par- I personally don't think. That that is necessarily helpful to an applicant or a planning board necessarily, I think I would rather see it shortened or at least. Match the intent of the expedited permitting law, so that most of the boards that give decisions on projects, such as like, we'll just say, conservation, planning and zoning. Have some more time, have some more timeframes, so that a project can actually get expedited and pushed through quickly. To me, that's one of my bigger pet peeves, my other pet peeve is under the rezoning process under forty-eight-nine, I really don't think it's fair that abutters aren't notified. I know it's the law, I know that we can just send it out to the abutting communities, but if I had a piece of property in next door to me, someone was gonna rezone it to be the adult use entertainment. I don't want to have to just know that it was in the newspaper and then, and then find out after town meeting.
And it does that.
It does, well, it does, and I, I feel genuinely bad for people, not everyone reads public hearing notices, so, but those, those are two things that I would consider changing.
Um, Steve?
Really collaborative projects with the town committees, local nonprofits.
Really collaborative projects with the town committees, local nonprofits, state and federal government that you believe the planning board should work to accomplish?
Oh, God, I can think of a bunch of different ones, but, um, well, generally speaking, I would think, oh. Alright, I'm gonna have to say maybe something sort of like CPA, in the sense that if you have a community preservation project, that's historic. And, or actually, let's say an open space parcel. So in order to actually, so you already adopted CPA, which you have, um, so you wanna go ahead and send the parcel to town meeting to be purchased. So you have, um, Mass Historic and/or the Department of Conservation Recreation, we'll say as potential grant fountain sources. So you're already working with two state governments, then you have CPA, then you also have to involve town meeting, and you have all these layers of municipal government. And those actually usually like the planning board doesn't get, get to get too involved in. You're sort of on the periphery of it when you really think about it. But I, I think the planning board should be involved with it because that's what long range planning is all about. That's the whole essence of, of planning, so at least.
That's a good point.
That's just something that comes to mind off the top of my head. I hope it answered your question.
Alright, well, the town needs to expand its tax base while at the same time to affect the planning and zoning, retain the small town's senior characteristics converted, converted by residents. What role should the planning board play in achieving the balance?
Well, under your master plan, you're supposed to achieve both, which, uh, is always difficult because there's a natural push and pull when you put those two together. But I do think you are, you are, you do play an integral role in economic development because you are supposed to work with the Board of Selectmen and the town to help expand its tax base and, um, keep your tax rate down. But I think primarily, and you should be looking at that for long range planning. And you could make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen for ideas like tax increment financing or other alternatives that they can make. I think it also ties into transportation, but to go back to the original question, I think your role is both. But I think under your current rules and regulations, you're primarily more there to protect the historical integrity of the town. That, that's the way I've read your regulations. If in an ideal world I can answer that question, you should fifty percent support both. That, that's what you're supposed, that's what you're supposed to do.
Do you want to add anything to that question?
How well do you know we're out with you?
I, I've just researched the regulations online, um, before I interviewed.
What are we doing right and what are we doing wrong?
Well, what I did glean was your biggest employers were market basket. I forget who the second largest one was, was it some sort of glass company? And then it was the town. And usually, there's usually like one through eight, and then it's the town, or the school, and then the town, however you wanna list it. So, um, I'm gonna go out on a limb and say that maybe if you have at least one parcel in town, one parcel that overall, like, most people agree on, that you go ahead and designate that parcel for the forty-three-D status, the expedited permitting, and you have all the boards and committees meet, you have one member from each board and committee, and you make the commitment to do the one hundred and eighty day expedited permitting on that parcel. Because that sends a huge message to developers, that they're gonna actually get a decision one way or the other after a hundred and eighty days. And, um, I think a lot of developers, especially in this economy, they don't wanna waste their time or money going to a town that hasn't made a commitment back. And that's just a show of commitment by zoning bylaw amendment.
Is that what we're doing right or wrong?
I haven't seen that yet. Well, I mean, that, I made it sound simple, but that takes a lot of collaboration between, between not just a lot of different departments, but a lot of boards.
So can it be a, just a parcel, or does that have to be?
It can be a few parcels, it can be a few different parcels in areas of town.
I always look at it as a section of the town.
No, I actually, one community I know has one in one of the town and the other in a town. But you don't get the extra money from the state.
Is there a minimum size, is there a minimum size?
Nope, you just don't, you actually get, it was originally a hundred and fifty thousand, um, that the, the state would give you. It's been since reduced to a hundred thousand. But it was really cool because then you could spend the money on, I shouldn't have just said cool on TV, but. But you can spend the money, um, to promote expedited permitting. So what we did was we bought iPads, and we bought DPW in the engineering department, like one of those large scanners. So that when we did our packets, the selectmen, all the selectmen and all the land use boards had iPads, and then we would just send it. So you had everything in place for the meeting, like you just bought your iPad with you. Yeah.
It goes up on the screen too?
Yes.
Uh, do you have anything you would like to, uh, ask the board or add to your interview?
Nope, I don't think so, just that, um, I'm really, really.
Especially the members that.
I'm really interested in the position, I, I do think you have, you've done, you've done a lot of creative planning that, you know, I mean, technically by population, it might be considered a small town, but you're ahead of the curve compared to a lot of bigger towns. And that's what makes it so interesting to me, because I think that it, it shows your commitment to residents. That's it.
Where were you, in North Reading?
I was in North Reading, yes.
What's the population out there?
Uh, it was about thirteen thousand. Yeah, I don't know if it was the last census, but it was then.
You know, you, you, you mentioned when you first sat down, uh, that you were interested in this position because you liked the, the twenty-two hours works well into your family's schedule.
It does.
If a forty hour position opened up, uh, the next town over in six months, would that be something you'd be pursuing?
No, I have no, like, um, I was asked like at the original screening committee. I have no desire to go back to a forty hour position that is actually really gonna be sixty to seventy hours a week. I know how that, I know how that is, I know in like, you know, another town, if it's like thirty-five, forty hours a week it's salaried, that you're gonna be working sixty to seventy hours a week.
But if this grew, you wouldn't be adverse to that.
But what?
If this grew hour wise, no.
No.
It's the number of hours.
I, I just, I, I would, yeah, no, I just.
Twenty-five, thirty-five?
I, I just wanna, no, I just wanna work part-time, that's it, flat amount of hours. That's, that's my goal. I mean, I don't care if it's like twenty-three one week and twenty-one the next, don't get me wrong, but I don't, I don't wanna go back to working sixty to seventy hours.
Are you familiar with comp time, vacation time?
Yes, all that good stuff, yep.
Many years of municipal government, so. You know all the components of.
We don't have that here, do we?
Sure, you wanna go back to work? Aren't you an artist? Um, any other questions, because now we, uh, we have to meet as a group now and, uh, talk, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I really appreciate you calling.
Uh, my mom, thanks.
Take care. Good to see you.
Thank you, good luck to meet you. Thank you.
Meeting the other members.
For coming down.
Thank you, thank you.
So the deliberation is, um, an open session, correct?
Yes.
It can't be executive session?
No. So I think it would probably, uh, the whole third board to maybe review any notes you made from the interview and look at the package again. You have two very well qualified candidates, the screening.
You wanna weigh in?
The screening committee put forward two very well qualified candidates, so I think it comes down to now, um, which is the best fit for your board, um, and, and looking at, uh, your work styles and what your, your expectations of the position are, and, and taking each candidate and thinking of how they are gonna work well with you to get your work done. So I, I think, I think they're just, they're both, uh, well qualified for what we have in Raleigh, you know, our needs are in Raleigh.
Well, I, I'd first like to raise the question, do we have to do this tonight? Seems to me like it's kind of rushing it, but I understand you, especially you, Kirk, wanna get something.
Right, but I, but I think it should be talked about more than just tonight. I think we should set a meeting just for this issue.
I don't care, what do you think, I know you're, you're.
No, we have one other thing tonight, but, um, if you, if the group, we can do that, we can meet another night.
I mean.
We wanna hire somebody, but as I was, the goal is to have.
Very well qualified, that's.
The goal is to allow somebody, now it's what, the fourth?
Yeah.
People need, if, you know, give two weeks or more, if they have jobs, they have to, uh, give people notification.
I mean, you're thinking about, but. I think it should be discussed a little bit tonight and, and another night, now that it's fresh on everybody's mind, where we just went over the two candidates. I mean, I think some of the, some of it should be discussed.
No, it's fine, I, I don't wanna rush such an important decision.
No, I don't either.
In eight minutes.
No, but I think part of it should be discussed tonight where we just went through the, uh, process.
Well, we have eight minutes to the next.
I'm not saying make a decision tonight.
But however, first of all, people take out the calendars, because I would like to know.
I'm tied up on the twenty-fifth. Really?
As usual, it gets scrunch.
I have something to eat.
Where'd you get such nice appointments from?
Oh gee, I know.
I think I'm open any night, especially the twenty, twenty-fourth.
You stay still laid off, Kirk?
Huh?
You're not laid off still?
Oh, no, no, I'm back at work.
You get paid for all that time?
Wealth is out, leverage is out.
Let's get that on, on tape every time I break.
Don't have to answer that question.
Alright, forget, look at you, I gotta take that, um. That's tomorrow. I don't know, I'm open tomorrow. I think it has to be the tenth to the fifth, uh, when the chairman's talking. Is anything happening then, uh, or the ninth? I don't care if we meet on Monday, I wanna do it sooner than later.
Yeah, no, I stand that.
How about the ninth, we only need.
If people wanna do it tonight, fine, I, I just don't have.
No, 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 in deference.
You gotta think a little bit.
Yeah.
The ninth gives some time to think and it also gets it done, uh, expeditiously in terms of.
I have no problem.
The town administrator who.
Well, we're gonna need to post the meeting tomorrow morning, uh, the town.
Yeah, so it's gonna have to be the ninth, so. Hand you up for the ninth, alright?
Seven-thirty.
Is that alright? You can do it at seven, but seven-thirty works better.
Anything else on the agenda that night? Seven works, seven works.
No, there's, just.
No, seven-thirty's fine.
Seven-thirty for everyone, you're getting here, it's easier, seven-thirty, seven? David, seven, I'll do it at seven.
I, seven, doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Alright, seven-thirty's fine, and as you know, with, that way we can relax.
So at seven-thirty, is that?
It has to be posted, um.
I, I'll post it tomorrow, is there anything else you want on the agenda, or just a discussion about the planning board finalists?
So what we got?
Look, I could make, I, I could find things in the next twenty-four hours, but I'm not going to.
No, because we're gonna be meeting the.
We're meeting on the eighteenth.
Monday the ninth, you say correctly.
Yes, and that's at seven-thirty, okay? You have information in front of you, um.
It will also be.
Remember, this has to be, um, done in an open session, so no emails and stuff like that. I don't, I don't have to warn this.
Mister Chairman, if any of the board members wanna reflect or review the tonight's video, that should be on the website.
That's great.
Right here is our master.
Is that true?
Website technician, and he will upload this probably within a day or two.
Do, does anyone, we will.
So if you wanna watch it on the website, you can look at the candidates again.
That means Monday, that'll be on TV too.
Well, we do have a selectmen's meeting, so we'll have to see if we can arrange, uh, we're not sure if anybody else is meeting here, I'm not sure if there is. A Board of Health usually meets occasionally on Mondays, but, um, uh, that's the only question I have about Monday, but we'll have to see if we can get coverage.
We can get call in.
Senior center.
Alright, does anybody have any initial impressions, you don't have, I'm not asking for a polling, but.
Well, I think they're both, uh, you know.
When I go around, just kinda come to the.
Both qualified, and I'm sort of between, between myself, so that's why I, I raised the issue, do we have to actually make a decision? Have time to reflect on it?
In the context of what, um, they're very different personality, one obviously is hitting the ground running. And don't think of me, think of an entire board, don't think because I'm just some chair, I mean, I'm not gonna be, be, chair is gonna be moving. You know, think also in terms of if you were chair, chairman, and had to be working with, the chairman tends to work, as you know, with, with the planner on, on a daily basis almost, you know. So you have to also think as if you would, you know, empathize and put yourself in the shoes of the chairman and, and which person you would like to work with every day.
Well, let me ask you this, we, we can all talk about both of them till we're all blue in the face. And whichever one we may choose, but is there a trial period, ninety days, we're not happy, we can say, well, it's not working out.
Yeah, there's a probationary period.
There is. How long is that?
Um, I'm trying to think for non-union, um, I wanna say it's probably, um, three, uh, maybe three months.
Three months?
Three to six months, up and in. We have different, uh, probationary periods for union, various contracts, union contracts, so I'm thinking for non-union, it's probably about three months.
Well, that's nice to know.
To release with, uh.
That's good, and I think it's very important, you know.
It was without.
It's a great, it's a great question.
You know, we got their input on the interview, but, you know, we've yet to work with either one of them, so, you know, that's why it's, it's good to have a probationary period.
Well, it seems, it seems like Heidi certainly understands the, the scope of the job, and like, like, uh, Kurt said, she's gonna hit the ground running and, and fill the position right away. I like the idea that she understands putting together, uh, the scope of the meeting, uh, give, give us some notes on the, on, on the cases that are being presented. That's something that is invaluable, but I'm sure that either candidate could, you know, eventually get to the point where they're able to provide that information. It just seems like she's already able to, you know, familiar with doing that.
Well, first, Kim, it, it, I don't know what's making her pick this, but I, he mentioned something about consulting. Does he think he's gonna do more consulting than actual, you know, typing and all that stuff and getting ready for the meetings?
No, I, I think what he meant by that was that, you know, this would, this would be a part-time job, so on the side, if he had an opportunity to consult with, you know, and not like a developer, you know, I'm sure as long as there's no conflict of interest or anything like that, that he would do that as a side thing, not, he wasn't talking about consulting with us, that's why I took.
That's, I, that's how I understand it.
And he had a number of, um, uh, references, and, and that Amy was one actually that did, um, did the background work on Mister Baker. But no, he, um, he's, he's been involved with a number, even Winchester, uh, the planning department. He's doing a lot of pro bono work for, for different organizations and things.
To get experience in Massachusetts.
I think he's got, um, so I think he's really developing into a consultant and some of that because he actually is a GIS person, which I actually found to be quite impressive. That was a, that's a skill that said that we don't really find, you wouldn't find in a small town. We have a heavy reliance on MVPC for that kind of work. So he's got a, a lot of technical skills that are being kind of utilized in, in a variety of communities in Winchester, Raleigh, and.
Personally, I don't feel we really have a great need for those technical skills here in Raleigh, but not, not that it's a bad thing, but.
I think you'd have to kind of assess based on what you read on Kurt and what you heard, you know, how fast he could learn. You know, the mundane, the, the stuff that I, that I'm still learning, that we're all still learning. Any, any member who comes onto a board, I know when I went onto the conservation commission, you don't, you don't suddenly know the Wetlands Protection Act or the local Raleigh bylaw, you don't do, you don't know it. And then all the rules that are associated with it.
That's true.
Even as chair, I'm learning every day, you know, I'm learning something new, but you have to have the ability to ask questions and make mistakes.
Yeah, I think, well, there's a lot to learn for, for anyone who comes in, whether even, even an experienced town planner, they still have to learn about Raleigh and our rules and our.
And get the work done.
The town and the people of the town, and that sort of thing, so.
Most importantly.
I mean, he seems intelligent enough to, to learn on the job, I don't think, I mean, I would just hold that against him.
Definitely impressed with all the money that Heidi's managed to, to, uh, get for the town of North Reading in terms of grants from the.
Yeah, but she might not get that from, for us.
We have a different socioeconomic background and we got social.
Absolutely, and one of her projects was that forty-R, which was over a million dollars in one shot, but.
Forty-R, in my opinion, would not go well in this town. I, I think there'd be so much opposition to it that it would, it would never get off the ground.
What is forty-R?
Well, it's what, what Heidi was talking about, and, and I think it's mainly been used more by bigger cities and towns. But basically you designate part of your town as a, as a separate district, and you allow by right zoning.
Like an enterprise.
Which, which, um, you know, by right zoning, anyone can build, you know, pretty much whatever they want. It's like, it's consistent with the zoning bylaw. Rather than special permit review, which is what we employ in this town, so you'd be giving up your special permit authority. To build debt, to build denser developments, housing, residential, commercial.
Doesn't incentivize condos, apartments, commercials.
Right, she said, yes, which I think for, for that very reason, it would not go well, well in this town.
But on, on the other, in her notes, she says that it, it took the affordable housing from three percent to ten percent. But on, on the other, in the notes, she says that it, it took the affordable housing from three percent to ten percent with the one project, which meets the forty B requirements. Not suggesting we have to do it, I'm just saying.
Well, that's the thing, I don't, I don't think, I personally don't think.
I don't think we'll ever, we will never reach forty.
No, we won't. Well, for one thing, we have sewers, and that's an impediment to large apartment buildings, which is what you have to do.
And we are also much quicker than.
We are.
I think we're quicker than most places.
We are.
Plus, there's just the day-to-day mundane clerical work that has to be done, so you can't, you know, you can be like gung-ho and, but, but part of that job is to be like normal, relaxed. Interact with other people in the offices and, and the town hall, so you have to think about the personality of the two different people. One seems to be very more quiet, and another one is very, um, enthusiastic and go-getting, so you have to, um, not, not that the, the quieter person isn't go-getting. Just might be quieter about it. So, I think it, how is this person going to, we have to think about, how is this person going to fit in right in here with our personalities, our building inspector, the, the zoning board, the board of health, uh, our, our conservation agent? And then how is he or she going to, um, react with the town hall work and the, their, their, our rules for the town that have to be followed? So, you know, we get.
It struck me that in the notes on Kirk, I think he's described several times by different people as, um, soft, easygoing, personable, you know, works well with other people. You know, so it seems like that's a pretty consistent impression of him, and it's the same impression I got from him in the interview.
But it's very interesting, you know, what I'm saying of the chairman, like, I'm glad actually we have a little, a few more days because I'm very torn. Even, it's very interesting when you go through this process and the second time with the same candidates and, um, and with references in front of you. But as, you know, as a chairman, I can be, you know, you can take the short view, the long view, with a, you know, there's definitely, um, there's definitely very many appealing characteristics of having somebody with so much experience coming in. But at the same time, you know, with a little time, you wanna, I want to take a longer view too for the town.
If he's going to stay here.
And we don't know that because we're already.
His background leaves me a little concerned about that.
He seems to move around a little.
Well, you know.
Well, that's because.
He said he stayed too.
His wife's at the Boston Globe, I don't know if she's going anywhere.
Oh, she's with the Globe?
Yeah, well, I just, I just picked that up in, uh, in, in one of the, Brian Alburn from, uh, South Virginia mentioned that that's why he came up here.
Oh, okay, well, that makes me feel a little bit.
Well, she, she is long here.
I was thinking he's going to Winchester Gazette or something like that.
Well, it's probably a transcript.
So, but she still could move to the New York Times or the Washington Post.
Well, his wife is from here too.
She's, she's a business, uh, work, she's a business writer, I believe, she works for the business section.
Of the Globe?
Yes.
All right, so we're five minutes over, so I want to do the last.
Well, I mean, the same issue may happen with the other, the candidate too.
Yeah, you never know. You never know.
Oh, again.
Life goes on.
We asked the question, I mean, I think Heidi made it very clear that this is where she's gonna be kind of, you know, that's where she wants to just kind of land.
You know, it was interesting, I was.
After all the other, all the other changes and.
I asked the question, I did thinking that she's going for a twenty-two hour job because that's what's available, but when a full-time job comes available, that's what she jumped to. And she shut that down, but then when you asked the follow-up question, she doesn't even want more than twenty-two hours.
Yeah, right.
She made it pretty clear, she doesn't want to grow into a thirty-two hour week job.
Well, I think the town, the administration knows that I'd like to have the job bro.
I think she may have misunderstood.
I think she did too.
Yeah.
Because her response was, no, I don't want it.
I think, I think she didn't understand you were suggesting it might go to thirty hours or, or something like that.
I think if you read, she has, um.
But she doesn't want a full-time job.
She has a history, she has a history and a, and a tendency to, uh, put in more, I mean, I think she's feeling, you know, Thompson can kind of burn you out. You have twenty-two hours, but the workload that is, is thirty-five, and you don't put in, you don't get that much comp, so. Some people, some people are very disciplined, I know Katrina would work extra hours only, she was new, she had a lot of extras things she had to do to organize, uh, in the new position, new office. But I think you'll see that she's kind of a workaholic, you know, so when she said forty hours and the town wants seventy, you shouldn't want that anymore.
Well, I understand that perfectly.
She's been there, done that, you know, so.
And she's got children, young children.
Been there, I don't want to repeat that scenario.
Sure, sure.
So, I don't think.
But we, we, we got the honest answer out of burning up.
Right. I, I don't understand why she left her last job, though, I, her answer left me a little bit unsatisfied.
And on the other hand, Debbie, I mean, if the board.
Which was a good planning job, you know, if you want to be a planner, but maybe it was the hours, I don't know.
There is a scenario after we meet on Monday, um, can't be really deadlocked, but, but people want to read, the process was opened up and advertised October second, so it took two months to go the process the first time. I don't really want to see us have to go through again and re-advertise, but your opinion on that is what, that?
If there's no decision made by the planning board on either candidate, um, I would say we could continue to look through the file, but, um, you know, it's gonna be difficult, uh, to recruit and open a second in.
I think.
I think we can make a decision.
I can take, maybe, decision.
I just want. It's just like chopped.
Huh?
Chopped in the food shop.
Yeah.
We have a decision.
I just wanted to make an amendment tonight, working as, as our esteemed engineer, because it's trading for time.
I have no idea, I don't know any of the.
I know, I wish I could, we can't, I have somebody quite like that.
I remember working on a list back in.
Um, okay, so, is he out there or not?
I'm gonna bring in your nine, nine twenty appointment, and I'll lock up the, um, planning boxes.
And also, we.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you, Debbie.
I mean, personally for.
Yes.
So, we'll close the meeting for Monday and Sunday.
Thank you for assisting us in this process.
You're very welcome.
Thanks.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you.
Thanks.
They're ready for you.
And, and your able assistance.
Glad to please the planning board.
Thank you.
You know, right now it is.
All right, of course, I have to go to the, she can't lock that because I have this. Want me to give her a yell?
Yep.
Don't, don't lock the door. You're gonna lock.
I'll, I'll lock. All right, we're basically here. As you know, we, um, had our, when was our last meeting?
Sixteen.
Twenty?
Yeah.
Doesn't matter, in the last meeting, we closed the site hearing for artistic, are you alone?
I am.
You don't have an entourage with you? Are you gonna argue for yourself tonight?
That's right.
Artistic landscapes LLC, as we all know, um, on one eleven, every port turnpike. Gone through a process that, that has resulted in, uh, Larry Graham, uh, preparing a, um, certificate of vote for site plan approval. I just want to ask. Also, um. I also prepared that, just to sign both, because one refers to sign. That's a special thing, it's really the same, because it's incorporated in.
Oh.
But just from a housekeeping.
Welcome.
Oh, so we have a decision on the site plan.
We got to, and then, yeah, one vote on the vote, one for the sign. Because the, uh, the hearing notice reflected the vote.
Okay.
Original application. The training was here.
Right.
I'll go back, but I went back and, uh, researched. Just what I'm talking about here is that, um, it's really the same thing, because the, and the conditions incorporate, um, the signage that, as you know, and this is what I want Tony to maybe kind of ref- uh, refresh our memories, because we went through a lot of other. Here's another one, everybody have a, we went through all the other aspects of the project, but our signage bylaw, what is it, eight point six? Requires a special permit, even though, um, it came in together. We look at the original legal notice, goes back to August fourteenth. Uh, there's an application of special permit under section eight point six. And the site plan.
So, Karen, I'm confused.
I don't know, just because it's all, all, all of we, we, we went through it in minutes and they discussed.
No, no, but, but we have.
Just tell me whether I have, can do another one, I have to do another two, because it was.
You're talking about the notice?
Applicate, yeah. Like a little chart.
Yeah, okay, no, that's fine, but it was noticed, so, so the, the sign aspect of it was noticed properly.
Yes.
Right.
Section eight six and the second one.
Right. But the thing that's confusing me is, um, I've got one draft decision that only talks about site plan approval, and I've got another draft decision that talks about special permit.
It's just a special permit. Just to, just to note that this.
So, so is this one, we're not?
We're doing both.
We're doing both?
Because one, the sign, even though the signage conditions are already in, are in, almost like the bank.
Okay.
The bank, it was the same. We don't really have to, because it's incorporated in this and.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know.
No, we don't have to.
Don't have to.
I was, I was just very, I mean, we could probably just do it underneath, certificate of vote that Larry voted up.
We did what?
I'm just saying, a certificate of vote that was written up that incorporates.
Right, the site plan approval.
That artistic, right, that artistic, um.
Right.
The conditions that refer to the illuminated signs are several, if you looked, right?
I mean, it seems to me, um, that you would have a separate decision for approval of the site plan and a separate decision for approval of the special permit for the illuminated sign.
That's why I booked it.
Okay. The thing that confused me was, so the other, um, letter that deals with the special permit approval, um, says, you know, we're approving an application for approval of a special permit, and then it says site plan approval is based on. I mean, I think I would recommend.
Yeah, because you just.
That you just, you just have a one appro, site plan approval that deals with the site and one letter that approves the special permit for, for the illuminated sign, and keep them separate, because they are separate issues.
And the only question I, I think you're.
One just letter.
Dancing around it, but, uh.
And I was just trying to do.
Does the notice, uh, that went on, that was, that was, uh, issued back in August, opened up the meeting for close the special permit and the site plan adequately? Okay, because it does incorporate both.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I would otherwise.
It just kind of got dropped along the way when the planner left and Larry was not in touch with anyone, you know, it kind of get, it, it became secondary for a while there, and I think Tony brought it back, and we brought it back to his, uh, we brought it back in our last meeting.
Right.
And said it was a condition of, of any approval.
Right.
But this is more of a housekeeping, you know, this is more of a legal, just making sure they are legal. So, I'll have a letter drawn up if we vote, and I can, you know, if we vote to close the special permit, you know, or approve the special permit for the sign.
Well, for, if we're agreeable to approve.
That's what I meant. Yeah, because the bylaws in front of you, yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
And you've had some, uh, chance to, at this point, since August, to go over the signage bylaw.
Correct.
Not only with, with Bill and, and you, so are you ready to describe how it's in compliance?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, the, one of the handouts, there's a page that looks like this.
Looks like this, people?
Yeah.
So, I think it was back in the August meeting, the sign was not labeled of which section was internally illuminated, so.
That was the question then in the minutes, right?
Then on August twentieth, we amended the drawing to show clearly that only the burgundy background would have the illumination, the lower part that is in white would not be illuminated. And therefore, in being internally illuminated, we're not uplighting, so we're in compliance from that aspect. And we're not up, we're not internally illuminating in white background, is one of the other stipulations.
Right.
And then.
So, the entire thing is sixteen feet high, right?
Correct.
You have inches, so maybe put.
Minor detail. You might want to check with your sign guy.
Oh, I know exactly.
Deal, but.
There it is.
Nice spot.
Now, in addition to this, you're having a, um, a, a building mounted sign?
Correct.
And you're, you're requesting a variance from the ZVA to see the area.
Correct.
Size, so what, how big was the sign, do you want to have a zone sign?
I think that was around twenty-eight or thirty square feet, and the way, the zoning board approved that size. And one of the stipulations in the bylaw is that it cannot be more than fifteen linear feet, um, a name in length, so we're under that. And then I think it's ten square feet or twelve square feet, if you take up more than ten or twelve square feet, then you need to go to the zoning board of appeals. So, to put artistic landscapes with all the letters and get it out of font, then you can see if we want to require the variance. I'm about to leave, it's just getting chilly over here by the door.
Did you shut the heat off? It wasn't nice when I came back.
I learned that a whole.
Debbie shut it off on the way out the door.
Gee.
Yeah, I'm freezing.
You shut it off?
No, I'm just kidding, I'm, I'm administrator, saving, saving a couple of bucks.
No, it was seventy when we come in, I just looked at it, the first thing I did when I come in, I was gonna turn the heat up.
It said seventy-one right there.
Really? It's a draft, you know.
Yeah.
Larry, your citations reflect this last September?
December fourth, twenty thirteen. Larry, look, if you go to page two.
Page, page two. I'm gonna take this one. Fine. Take that one. This is for the board.
Whoa.
This is the last set.
And this would be your only freestanding sign, right?
Correct. See, this is not, this is not great. Look, look at the revision date, bottom right, almost bottom right, should be December fourth.
No, October thirty first.
Get rid of these. We can. NG, recycle.
Oh, I may have the only copy?
Well, no, there was copies dropped off originally, but my, the copy I had, I gave to you, so I don't have. Don't wait, Dave. For the sign location, I can explain that it's moved ten feet from, if it is the October thirty first version.
Yeah.
That's really the one. That's really the only difference. In the mass.
Well, the, the, the guardrail?
Correct, oh, I mean, on just the sign.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. The Mass Highway Department has approved the movement of the draft, the shortcuts.
One, one of the conditions is that we gotta tell me.
They left me a message yesterday saying that they're mailing it this week, but that it is approved.
I think, Tony, what I was thinking about, just to make sure, cause we need to sign these plans too, right? You want these signed?
Well, I think we were, is, I don't know what the format is.
You should sign them, if, if you're gonna, to approve it, you should sign a plan.
But because um, the ones that I had, had in the office are, can you come in Monday? Let's just do it Monday, cause that way I can have the letter, no, I want, I wanna talk and um, you know, I wanna make sure the sign is, what, what I can put in the letter, cause you want that in the form of a letter, we, we can vote on, right?
I, I would think so, that's the preferable way to do it.
With these specifications, to make sure it's in compliance, you know, the following plans are in compliance. Are there any other corrections on this? Is this the only one you have for your illuminated sign?
Yes.
Sure we, more.
No, I know, it's your only plant for that.
Correct.
Uh, does the board want him to list why it isn't compliant, or any of the, you know? The criteria, or just, you certify in here that it meets the criteria of eight point six?
I know.
You know, the illuminated sign by law. Just so that, cause this is gonna be something that will be in the record.
Okay.
Okay?
Certified, I mean, I have the bylaw here and then.
Well, I know, but you.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Cause then it's, it reflects the um, letter that we're gonna write in your behalf.
It's the sixteen.
Yeah, fixed, yeah, and any, any other errors, I don't want errors on this plan, does, does it have to be sixteen feet high?
Well, we have the grade.
Yeah.
Coming down.
Yeah.
And with the snow, with the clouds, we have to be above the snow throw for the um, clouds.
Yep.
Okay.
So that's why we have a six foot, three inch, um.
So how much lower is the sign than the street level, do you know?
I think on the inland side, if you will, that's, I think, three feet, um. And, so.
Yeah, so that's it.
Yeah.
Alright.
Correct, you can send me an email with a draft eleven.
Sure.
On my behalf, since I don't have.
The draft.
Approval, unapproval.
Yeah, um.
Okay.
There, there is, there is a requirement that these be turned off at night.
Correct.
So I think that should be a condition of the approval. All sign illumination shall be turned off after closing time, not at night.
You have this thing.
Yeah, that's in the bylaw.
Yeah, so if you can just, you know, say, just repeat the language of the bylaw, say, all.
Oh, so.
Subject of the.
I'm having Bill and you write, yeah.
I thought the only, I was thinking.
You want it by Monday, you're gonna, or help, we'll have, we'll help you if you, if you have trouble, I mean, I'll.
So all I'm doing is saying, yes, we, we will be in compliance with.
You wanna correct, yeah, you gotta make sure that all, there's no errors here in terms of feet and inches, whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, and there should be a note on here that says, compliance with uh, our illuminated sign by law eight point six. Okay, and the letter saying that, you know, subject to the following conditions, according to the bylaw.
Yeah, I can only think of one right now, that all sign illumination shall be turned on after clo- after closing time, diffuse the language of the bylaw. And it shouldn't, it should be said, subject compliance with, subject to compliance with um, what do you call it, it's not a site plan, but it's a, a drawing. Uh, I think it's a sketch, unless it's an engineer, so I think you just go, it's called a sketch.
United Sign Company.
Yeah, they don't really stamp, yeah, United Sign Company um.
Dated, whatever the date is. Did I hear you write that, that forty three feet below street level?
It usually signs it from the side.
Three feet below street level?
They usually would.
With a grade dropstone three feet before you're sitting.
Well, you want a sketch might be more, uh, more technical than.
Put down sketch.
Yes.
Okay.
A sketch dated August twentieth, two thousand.
Well, it'll be dated tomorrow or something.
This is gonna fix the sixteen.
Whatever, submitted by artistic landscapes.
The, the, the lower part of the sign is at proposed elevation seventy-one, and directly opposite that, street level's about seventy-three and a half, so, about two and a half feet. The, the lowest part of the sign, the lower post of the sign, if you will.
Right.
The upper post is a foot higher, so one and a half to two and a half feet.
I mean, I was wrestling with how I could help you tonight, you know, when the fact that we really did apply for a separate specification, and that's just the way it's written. I can't help it, we can vote on the site plan. Certificate of vote tonight, or we can do them both Monday, but we can do that tonight.
Oh, I see, that's what, yeah.
So we'll have, yeah, this is already, this is already complete with Larry, and you guys have this. Okay, so we'll vote on this Monday, I'll put it on there, cause that's not gonna be a disadvantage or advantage for you, just to do it Monday.
Twenty-one day.
Yeah, that's true, we probably should vote on this Monday. Alright, so, and you guys look at this tonight, the sign thing we've discussed, we can't vote on that tonight, we'll vote on that Monday. I do want you to look at this.
You're gonna tell Debbie to put on the agenda.
I know, I will.
Or like seven twenty, so we can.
Yeah, seven twenty, so we do it before the interview?
Thank you.
Alright.
Nine twenty?
Alright, what I would like you to uh pay attention to now is a certificate of vote that Mr. Graham, Larry Graham, our review consultant engineer, has uh written, along with Bill Holt, the engineer, and uh, Mr. Hurley, the applicant, over the course of uh, days and weeks. And, so can the board, I've read this thing, is anybody else take, wanna? You wanna say there's any revisions that?
No, I made the, I made a couple of revisions, but Cliff had suggested they show up as uh, number four, and number uh.
It should be uh, no, it was the.
Six.
No, it was um, it was number two.
Four and two, yes.
Alright, number two, as we discussed before we close the hearing, again, these reflect our discussion.
Yeah. Strictly, that's good.
Use activities on site comply with section four point seven two F, retail sales add on the site are strictly prohibited, which you already had that discussion at the last meeting.
While you're on that page, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Number four, there's the last sentence, or the last line on four, talks about full cutoff fixtures, that means. I'm not sure.
What does that mean? Yeah, yeah, and, and this is not your uplights, which you call under a different category.
Okay.
This is, okay, okay, this is, if you were to put a spotlight towards the sky, okay, I agree there.
Yes, yeah.
Right, this wasn't, uh, what we talked about here.
The uplights on the landscape features are permitted under a section of the bylaw.
Your landscaping and marketing.
Wanna make sure.
I got, just see, I think I do see a problem.
Shrubbery, marketing, okay?
Um, two, it says use activities on the site shall comply with section four point seven point two F, I don't see an F. It should be D, shouldn't it? Oh, wait a minute, this is, this is the old bylaw.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
So is, is that the landscaping provision?
Yes.
Yeah. We change it.
Would you?
If you're training again, okay.
Yeah. This is an old version.
Sorry. I just fell out of the book.
One more question, based on the discussion from tonight.
Sure.
On number five, E four. Eliminated lighting by law enforcement issue.
Yeah, Larry, I mean.
Can you delete that line, because that's going to be in the special permit?
Yes, I can vote. Correct?
Um, I don't think it needs to go out.
Why, 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 yeah, why did you word that like that?
Uh, I have a letter in my file from Frank, uh, Mark and Johnny.
Yeah. And that's what I was. I think you're misunderstanding, Anthony, yeah, that is not, that's not really a regu- that's more of a follow-up.
Okay.
Upon installation, that is an initial regulatory um, bylaw related issue.
Okay.
Because we have run into some compliance issues upon construction in the past, and we do have someone check those out, and to help out the building inspector, so that's more in line with that.
Does anyone have the current bylaw? I think this is still out of date.
Oh.
Cause it doesn't have the F, and, and this is uh, as of April two thousand twelve, so I think, I think we changed it into the spring two thousand thirteen.
No, that's the last one, Katrina again.
You sure?
Yeah.
Oh, so anyone have the current one?
Not on me, but I have it, I have it. Trust me, I'm.
Well, you said you looked at.
You know what, I think I have it.
Larry said that he, that he, that F is right, I'll take it, yeah, that's fine.
I think this, on that particular item we're discussing.
Right.
I think the special permit that they're gonna do is gonna trump that.
Okay.
You, you will have then got approval of this board, for the internally illuminated sign.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Right.
We would like to have, we would like to do this part of the, the whole plan.
That's fine.
It is actually a structure on the site, you know, and, and it's a substantial structure on the site, so, we'd like to kinda cover. But it's not gonna really affect um, a regulatory standpoint, it's not gonna make things more difficult for you, so.
Larry, if you say it, tell me it's F on Saturday. It used to be D, yes.
Oh, there's the, that's the old one. I've got the, I've got the old one in here, but uh, I've got the new one, uh, it's in the shop.
It's totally revised on the website, right?
Should be.
Yeah, I think that's why I saw the retail.
Yeah.
Cause I learned the website. Well, when I was looking at this.
I'm, I'm a hundred percent, cause I've checked your rights.
Okay. Does anybody have any comment, other comments, based on, you know, we've been on the site, we've, it's at a site visit, um. You've seen the plans, we had the discussion about changes in elevation, and I know uh, Steve still has reservations based on the fact that he really, because it drops off so quickly, really can't achieve a kind of turn, you know, a slowdown, turn off lane. It was kind of interesting, that turn off lane down the street, with a telephone pole in the middle of it, so I was.
Well, I'm sure it's gonna be moved, it's just a matter of time, you know, it's, I mean, I still, that's still where I'd like to see, you know, otherwise. I know, I, I would have had quite a few minutes.
But.
You get enough lead time coming from.
But I mean, this, the uh.
Coming yours, I think.
So I wanna entertain, I wanna, because this is a twenty-one day period, and this has been going on already since um.
September?
August.
August.
Um, we still have to do the sign on Monday, uh, but I think Larry has made the recommendation, um. Or is making a recommendation as a review consultant, that we're ready for vote on the site plan.
I am, yeah.
Somebody make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan approval.
Second.
Second by David Jacob, with motion by Cliff Pierce. All those in favor?
Right.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? No. Uh, opposed, Steve Cassiodas. Um, so it's one, two, three, so, yeah, three.
One, one of them.
Um, so you know, we'll, we'll do that on Monday, um.
For the sign.
For the sign. There's one other thing.
Does that have to go on?
Oh, and also, we have to, we'll sign the plans on Monday too.
How many copies of the plans do you want?
Three.
Three?
Three. And we'll do that at seven twenty, is that okay with you?
Yep.
And I'll, I'll be in touch, but I want this cleaned, I really don't wanna prove something that has errors on, I, you know, it needs to be.
Do you need notification for this Monday meeting?
Uh, Debbie's gonna post.
Debbie's gonna do it.
Oh, is this just a continuation?
No, notice, no, no, because it's already been noticed back in August, two weeks ago. Under section eight, under section eight point six, the special permit to illuminate sign. It's just that um, Larry, we didn't have a separate cer- certificate of vote for it, which we will now, not really certificate of vote, but a special permit. We'll also do the uh, minutes from the last meeting, on Monday, which is good, and.
Have you sent those out, or did you give them to us?
No, the minutes from the last one.
They have them.
From the last meeting.
From the last meeting, you have them, two meetings ago, we can at least approve those, the town assistant administrators are working furiously from the um, DVDs to make sure the minutes, so we're not two minutes, you know, two meetings behind, and we know what that's like, and we haven't had that for a while, so I'll take a.
I wanna say it was a good meeting.
Do you have the certificate of, do you have the certificate of vote that you need for Monday? Do you mind?
That's right, I got, no, I do.
Get rid of the, it's got specials on it.
Yeah, I got rid of that. Alright, thanks a lot, that was a couple.
Thank you. Gee, don't forget your cup, David.
Yeah, thank you, David, I thought it was gone forever.
I still forgot Claire's dish.
All those in favor, that's right.
Well, that's right, I just thought of it, alright.
I meant to pile them up, but I didn't.
Thanks for coming, I thought it was a good recommendation to kind of give it up.
Keep it.